Good evening. We've called a order, the Dearborn Board of Education regular meeting for March 14th, 2022. I want to welcome everyone for coming tonight, and I want to thank you for your time and your support in helping us create an outstanding public school environment for your students, our students, and our community. So, welcome, everyone. May I have the first item, please?
Roll call. Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Deanne Brogio?
Here.
Trustee Mosip?
Here.
Trustee Pachlikoff?
Here.
Trustee Thorp?
Here.
Trustee Watts? Here. President McDonald?
Here.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Dr. Joshua Tynan, Principal of Nowland Elementary School, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
President McDonald, trustees, Dr. Maliko, let me introduce you to the best dressed man in Dearborn Public Schools, Dario. Come on up here is Italia. And Ari, why don't we go on the other side of Dario? And this is Ari. They're all second graders in Ms. Doyle's classroom, and they're going to lead us with the pledge. You guys ready?
Yep.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Come on up, I have a little something for you all. Nicely done, Dario, when you look so handsome. Arianna? No, you're Ariata.
Ari.
Oh, Ari, I'm sorry. There you are. Thank you so much. Well done. And Italia? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Tynan, for bringing your students to us today. May I have the next item, please?
Superintendent's update.
Good evening, everyone. I'll start with my agenda items, which we start with every meeting. We do have some retirements. We have Sonia Badun, 24 years of service. Pamela Castilla, 16 and a half years of service. Maed DeCruy, 23 years of service. Devany Pavelin, over 15 years of service. Laura Harad, 36 years. Nancy Hamayed, over 15 years. Tuhaj Aber, 21 years. Suzanne Mardini, 26 years. Denise Norburn, 29 years. Julianne Spencer, with 34 years of service. Again, we thank them, and if we can congratulate them on their retirement. So, we do have one item, bond refinancing on the agenda for today, and that is a savings to taxpayers through the refinancing of over $5.3 million. So, I think that's a positive. It's going to the board today, and I did want to mention that, and I want to thank Mr. Wall for his leadership in that area. I will move along to my non-agenda items, and we talk about budget, and I'm going to tie the next two together, the Meritorious Budget Award with the NSBA presentation. This is for budget transparency, budget implementation, for clean audits that have been run. Again, I want to thank Mr. Wall, but I want to thank the Board of Education. Mr. Wall, trustee Thorp and I will be presenting on that topic of budget transparency at the National School Board Conference in April, and it is one of the largest conferences that you could ever attend in education. So, it's something we should be proud of. We were accepted because of the transparency between the administration and the board, and I'm going to ask Mr. Wall to come up, and I think President McDonald, you said that any trustees that would like to come up for the picture as we present the new board. It's four years in a row. Okay. And next, I'm going to ask Ms. Peterson and her team to come up to talk about the virtual school mascot.
Good evening. Well, trustees, President McDonald and Dr. Maliko. Obviously, I'm Shannon Peterson, Principal of the K-12 Virtual and Long Elementary, and Erin McEnveil is the interim assistant principal. And we have spent quite a bit of time this year working with students and committee members to choose a mascot and a school color for Dearborn Public Schools' virtual K-12.
So, the process started with having a conversation with the students about what a mascot is. The students were asked to think about two questions. What does a school logo look like? And what does our school represent, and how would that look in a logo? Our wonderful fifth-grade teacher, Ms. Dexter, put together this presentation for the students and opened it up for student submissions, and we had 112 student submissions for the mascot drawing.
So, the top four are shown on the screen there. Those got the most student votes. We opened it up to the students, K-12. And then, we met with community members, and we discussed that we really, as a community, felt the robot was a representation of the virtual school. So, we then started to work with our art teacher and a student to develop that.
So, we assembled a community committee. This committee included parents, community members, staff, students, and teachers. We met two times via Zoom and then communicated via email as our mascot evolved over time. The community gave guidance, direction, suggestions, and Mrs. Thomas, our art teacher, then brought all of those community member ideas and worked with our high school students to further develop the mascot. And at that time, the community committee also approved our school colors of royal blue and black, which we are representing this evening. And that's how we came to our final mascot presentation this evening.
So, we came up with the idea of, it actually started as virtual vectors, vectors using the science and math term, but that kind of had some different meanings for some of our community members with the city. So, we decided to go with virtual victors because our students are conquering remote learning. They have direction and force, and it's just amazing to pop into an elementary classroom or a 12th grade classroom via Zoom. Our student artist, Janelle Wazim, actually created the virtual Victor robot, and we actually have a video with her speaking because she could not come today. If it all works. Can't hear the video?
Virtual K through 12 school. So, for the idea of this mascot, Mrs. Thomas, my art teacher, showed me many prompts of what other students had created. I decided I wanted to take a little inspiration from that, but keep it similar. At first, I came up with a design that was a pale aqua, and I realized, no, that's not the right color, so I needed to change that up a lot. There was plenty of revisions and working and tweaking throughout the entire thing. For the sign, I decided to give him a representation of what he's trying to, like, convey, what he's all for, rather than just a mascot, in a way. So, yeah, I added the flame to give him, like, a floaty aspect, like he's all high in the air, like Superman, in a way. Yeah, this was a really fun project to make, and I enjoyed it.
So, we're definitely hoping that you support the mascot for virtual and the school colors. Obviously, we like them.
Sure what they were.
Questions? Great, thanks.
Thank you.
There is one question.
I do want to congratulate you on changing, and I know there's some confusion from the audience, from vector to victor, because vector in the city is rodent control. We really don't want that associated with this wonderful virtual school that has just gotten its flying start, and I love this. It was a community effort. It was a student prompt that created both the idea and the drawing, and the colors are fabulous. You can buy them anywhere.
Well, and we were really proud of what this evolved to, because originally, when we went with the robot, we thought we would have to have one that actually changed through the levels, because an elementary robot might look different than a middle school versus a high school, but we're pretty proud that this can encompass K-12.
Anyone else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item, please. Oh, we're still on, sorry.
So, I'll keep moving along here. The COVID update, you know, the last three weeks, we've seen our lowest numbers in the district, which is really a miniscule of a percentage when you look at seven, six, 10 cases across the district with the district our size. So, you know, we see a lot of the positive going on as far as COVID goes, and hope that as we get into the nice weather, we saw it today. We didn't like the snow yesterday, but we like the weather today, that we see more positive going. All reports are with the mask optional. That's been going fine in the schools, according to the reports I'm getting from students and staff, so that moving in a positive direction. Wanted to mention as well, and I did tape a one-minute message, but it hasn't been released yet, but I did send an email to our social workers for Social Work Appreciation Week, and want to thank them for the work that they do, especially during this pandemic. We know that a lot of the students have dealt with social emotional and other issues, online learning, and being at home in the pandemic, and so they've done a great job. And we do have the highest number of social workers we've ever had as we added in the district. Some of that has come from some of the federal ESER COVID funding. I want to also mention and thank Mr. Leacher for the school safety training that we've been doing for really many years, but we've really ramped it up with our Alice model, and we've had training, I mentioned here before, with all staff in January, at Staff Professional Development in February, and we've also have an online module, but that was accompanied with administrator training that occurred last week, with the Dearborn Fire and Dearborn Police heavily involved for all administrators, and we're going to have more of that moving forward. So, want to thank everyone for school safety training in areas and the support of the board as we have implemented budget in those areas as well. I also want to mention, we are, the committee did wrap up its work for the potential bond, the VIP, and they finished their work last week. We do have a study session scheduled for the 23rd of this month at 6:00 PM, so it's open public for anyone to come. The committee recommendations will be presented to the board at that time, and of course, we'll get data and information. I know Mr. Wall must have been in to the board for that important discussion. I have two others that I'm just going to add, and one is, we're sad to see him go, but I do want to congratulate Dr. Patterson, who's worked for us for the past six-plus years as the Director of Assessment. He has assumed the duties of Superintendent for Addison Community Schools. So, although we're sad to see him go, we're very happy for him, and I told him, call me anytime, and I'll probably see him at a lot of the association meetings and conferences if we can give him our recognition right now. I know it's close to where he's currently living as well. And the other thing I just want to mention, I want to thank the board for their support with my involvement on state associations like Middle Cities and MASA. I think it does give us an additional advantage when it comes to working in Lansing. In fact, when I was at my Metro Bureau meeting last week, when the group from the Tri-County Alliance was in Washington, Debbie Dingle was talking about how our network and how we meet on a regular basis, so not only locally with the legislatures, but with lobbyists and others that Dearborn gets that extra influence. I heavily believe in the importance of networking, developing, developing good alliances across the state and beyond, because it just helps us out, it helps to help our students. And so, again, appreciate the support of the board with that, and that is the summary for today.
Thank you, Dr. Maliko. Next item, please.
Can I just say something?
Oh, absolutely.
I just wanted to say for School Social Worker Week, that I appreciate all of the social workers. I have two sisters who are social workers, so that's near and dear to my heart, and I appreciate all of the hard work that they put into this past school year, helping our students through this very difficult time of transitioning back to in-person, and I hope that they take time for themselves as well, because I know that they've taken most of their time helping our students. And then, also for the retirements, to those teachers who are retiring, just happy retirement. And I was just wondering if going forward, if we could have during those retirement announcements, those teachers who are retiring being recognized during a school board meeting? That's something we could discuss going forward, so.
If they'd like to.
Yeah, if they would like to, that's for sure, yes, so.
Trustee Barry?
Going back to the COVID update, a couple days ago was exactly two years when we started dealing with this pandemic. I honestly, I just talked to a former board member, Joe Guido, and he sends his blessings and screeds, and he says, "Thank you for doing what you've done, we've done the last couple of years." From the get-go, our job was not to make everybody happy. Our job was to do what was in the best interest, so I congratulate Dr. Maliko and his team for the last couple of years. People voiced their opinion, and they have the right to do so, but here we are moving forward, and I think we're in a good position. And one more thing, about a week ago, I heard about a school district out of state, no need to mention it who they are, but teachers are on strike. Teachers on strike. They're looking for better pay. They were feeling disrespected, morale was down, and they were asking for more social workers. There you go, trustee Watts. And I stopped thinking about it. Wow. Dearborn has always taken the lead on this, and we were so ahead of the game with compensating all of our employees. Morale is up, respect is throughout the district, and obviously, with social workers, we're more than doubled the amount of social workers. I'm sorry?
I think it was 10% increase.
Over time, it's, the percentage has been, I can't remember the exact percentage, but we have at least one in every building, and many buildings have multiple.
Okay, yeah, so, again, Dearborn, ahead of the game. Just want to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Barry.
Next is recognition and acknowledgements. Commendations?
Hello. My name is Mustafa Ahmed. I am a senior at Fortson High School. Now, to begin with the commendations, the district commendations. Commendations to Elaine Starrett, who met the requirements to renew her Chief Financial Officer certification through the Michigan School Business Officials voluntary certification program. Ms. Starrett completed 150 hours of professional development over five years to renew her certification through June of 2027. She is the Director of Accounting. Commendations to the district partners at communities and schools for hosting two district-wide spelling bees last week, one for elementary students and one for middle school. Thank you to the AMIDI Foundation for helping sponsor the event, and congratulations to all the students who participated after first winning school-wide competitions. Elementary competition winners include, for third grade, first place, Mohammed Alawi from William Ford Elementary; second place, Octavian Griffin from Snow Elementary; for fourth grade, first place, Fatima Shagra from William Ford Elementary; second place, Elliot Burton from Duval Elementary; for fifth grade, first place, Hadi Besma from Hague Elementary; second place, Mahz Soleiman from Howe Elementary; middle school winners include, for sixth grade, Rukhaya Martin from Bryant Middle School; for seventh grade, Yusuf Ahmed from Salina Intermediate; and for eighth grade, Priya Parasar from Dearborn Virtual K-12. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Leila Kasim from Fortson High School. To start with, high school commendations. Commendations to Ms. Summer Al-Mubark and the Etzel Ford High School staff for organizing a successful career fair for freshmen to learn about various career paths. Also, thank you to the many professionals who volunteered their time to share their experiences with students. Commendations to senior wrestlers, Joey Moreno and Julian Espinal, for earning all-state honors at the state wrestling tournament. Moreno finished third, and Espinal finished in seventh. Commendations to Glenn Warren, the Dearborn High senior, was recently recognized as a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Competition. Commendations to the Dearborn High Women's Ensemble, which received a First Division Excellent rating at the MSVMA District Choral Festival. Commendations to the South Middle School community. The school came together to raise $1,200 for Paul Martin from Bryant Middle School. Paul is donating bone marrow to his father, also named Paul, who is fighting leukemia. South students and staff also wore orange on Friday to show their support for the Martin family and for the fight against leukemia. Commendations to Eddie Terry, the engineer at Lindberg Elementary. Mr. Terry receives praise from the community for his helpfulness in clearing snow and otherwise assisting neighbors near the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done.
Next item, please.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, President McDonald, board trustees, Superintendent Maliko. A donation of $560 has been offered to Oakman Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a motivational speaker assembly. A donation of $500 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Why You Matter. A donation of $160 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a storage center for manipulatives. A donation of $3,000 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Registration for BPA, Business Professionals of America State Conference. A donation of $254 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation in partnership with TE Connectivity to be used for Fortson Athletics. A donation of 29 boys' jackets and 62 girls' jackets has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by UAW Local 600 to be given to students in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Staff recognition, early childhood teachers.
I am reading this on behalf of Amy Modica, who has been working so hard she has a case of laryngitis and isn't quite as loud as she sometimes is. So, this would be to recognize the Great Start to Readiness Program, GSRP, State Preschool, and the Early Childhood Special Education Staff, ECSE. Maria Montessori stated, "The goal of early childhood education should be to activate the child's own natural desire to learn. Tonight, we have the privilege of honoring early childhood educators in Dearborn who work with our youngest learners on finding joy in exploring, creating, and problem-solving in the world around them." This group of teachers include our special education and GSRP staff. When little ones come to our Dearborn Early Childhood Programs, our outstanding teachers are the first classroom learning experiences for many families. Our preschool teachers go above and beyond to ensure that every student loves coming to school and learning. Our teachers and paraprofessionals love these little ones and spend endless time planning lessons that include sensory materials, hands-on activities to meet the interests of students, and to incorporate lessons into their daily play. Our staff also are able to identify special needs of students and implement early intervention strategies to strengthen speech, social-emotional skills, and readiness skills. Our teachers meet weekly to continue their professional learning and acquire unique ways to connect with students. A team of GSRP teachers volunteers to onboard and trade staff new to our district. The relationship between students, families, and teachers are strong and positive and establish a firm foundation for the many years beyond. Due to the hard work of teachers and trust of parents, we are honored to have doubled the number of classrooms in both programs during the past decade to 38 classrooms for GSRP and four classrooms for ECSE. Registration is ongoing and also formally occurring next month. Please call Student Services at the district office for more information. Thank you to every early childhood educator for your dedication, commitment, passion for our students, and successful relationships that result in great student learning. Early childhood is highly valued and appreciated, and we have programs in 13 elementary schools plus Cotter Early Childhood Center. There are several teachers here tonight to represent their colleagues and department, and they will introduce themselves now, beginning with our coordinator, Amy Modica.
Hi, I'm Amy Modica, and I'm the Early Childhood Coordinator and the Principal of Cotter.
Hi, I'm Veronica Kubits. I am the Early Childhood Specialist for the GSRP.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Stortini. I'm one of the lead GSRP teachers at Henry Ford.
Hello, I'm Brené Reed. I'm also one of the lead GSRP teachers at Henry Ford.
Hi, I'm Jessica Melashevsky. I'm a lead teacher at Cotter.
My name is Julie Bass. I am at River Oaks Elementary.
I'm Monica Rancetto, and I'm a lead teacher at Whitmore Bowls Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Isabel Maisie, and I'm a teacher at Cotter.
Good evening, everyone. Kathy Loris, lead teacher for GSRP at Whitmore Bowls Elementary.
Good evening. I'm Phoebe Diaz. I'm one of the teachers at Whitmore Bowls ECSE program.
Good evening. I'm Heather Bauer, one of the teachers at Whitmore Bowls in the ECSE program.
Good evening. My name is Dawn Stewart. I'm one of the ECSE teachers at Whitmore Bowls.
Good evening. My name is Emily Zayam, and I am the ASD preschool teacher in the morning and the ECSE teacher of Whitmore Bowls in the afternoon.
We're going to get a photo, so anyone from the board that would like to join the group, please come on.
I'm going to exercise tonight.
But I'm president?
Yes.
May I say something about special ed teachers, because I do have a personal experience. I'd like to chair Ms. Phoebe Diaz. So, about nine years ago, my son Omar was three years old, and we knew that he had a speech delay and other issues that we wanted to address, and special education was recommended to us, and our development delay program was recommended to be enrolled. So, we enrolled him at Dearborn Public Schools when he was three years old, and he had anxiety from any new place that he would visit. And when he was enrolled in Ms. Phoebe's Diaz class at Whitmore Bowls Elementary, he would cry every single day for straight two weeks. She was so patient with him every single day. So, I actually had, this was way prior to COVID, 2013 or so, so I stayed actually working remotely from nearby.
remotely from nearby cafe near Whitmore Bowls, but every day, I was assured by Ms. Diaz that Omar will be fine. And I truly want to recognize her work, and obviously, her colleagues' work, so that do magnificent work in our district to provide exceptional, not only educational services to our children, but also lifelong services of teaching our young ones about life and about everything that he really appreciates, and he would love to come back to your class, this March, and read to your students, as he is now a 6th grader at South Middle School. So, thank you to all the teachers like Ms. Phoebe Diaz and to all the teachers.
Thank you for sharing that. Next item?
Staff appreciation drawing.
What a great story, Trustee Mosip. They truly are. You could feel the calm of the early childhood teachers. I want to hang out in my son's young fives class when I went to read the other day, because they just ooze patience and calmness, and it's wonderful. Thank you to the early childhood teachers, and also the social workers, of course. So, the winners for this month's drawing, the nominations, and we continue to get nominations, the link is always included in the E3. Is it still called the E3? Okay, I was like, oh, did we change that name? So, always I continue to encourage everyone to continue nominating your colleagues. So, this month's winners, we have Katie Barello. Katie Barello was also the Teacher of the Year for the Alberta Muirhead Award earlier this year, which was for, supposed to be last spring, but due to Covid. So, it is Katie, congratulations. It's the year of Katie, well deserved. Also, Emily Mottash, she's also a teacher. Jo Martin, Principal at River Oaks. Liz Ditmar, also a special ed teacher. Rabab Nasrallah is part of the 2nd grade team at Lori K-8. She was nominated as part of the entire 2nd grade team with all the names, but her name is the one that came up on the wheels. So, congratulations, Rabab, and thank you. Dennis Wayland is a teacher at Etzel Ford. Marilyn Basio is a paraprofessional. Mae Fawaz, I believe, is a noon hour supervisor. Mona Tanana is also a noon hour supervisor. And the $100, so all of those are $50 gift cards. The $100 winner is Heidi Lang, and I'm going to read Heidi's nomination. She was actually nominated by four different people, so I'll read two of the nominations. Heidi Lang is a teacher in my department that is also encouraging and thinking of new ways to keep our students excited about being back in school. She provides a safe space for her students and is always concerned with us as teachers and her students having a positive learning environment and loving atmosphere. She is a wonderful teacher. Heidi Lang, Health Science Teacher at the Michael Berry Career Center. Heidi comes in every day with a positive and upbeat attitude, and she supports everyone in our group. We have two new teachers this year, and she has gone above and beyond to help them learn the ropes and to feel comfortable in their new roles. She is also a great teacher, and she shows her students how much she cares about them and how important it is to have a positive attitude. I am grateful for her. And ironically, that nomination was submitted by Lynn Osborne, and I only know that because she included her name. And Lynn Osborne had been nominated and also was selected in a prior month. And this month's gift cards are donated by Forsight Design. They're one of our vendors that work with our athletic department. So, thank you to Forsight Design. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, Sabrina. Next item, please.
Approval of minutes. Approval of minutes for the following Dearborn Board of Education meeting. Finance Committee meeting, February 14, 2022, Board Report 21-79. Executive Session Closed/Property, February 14, 2022, Board Report 21-80. And the Regular P-12 Meeting, February 14, 2022, Board Report 21-81. Make any necessary corrections and move approval of these minutes.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, I have a moved by Trustee Thorpe and supported by Trustee Barry. Are there any corrections? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Dean Brojo?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip?
Yes.
Trustee Petchlikoff?
Yes.
Trustee Thorpe?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?